Call to order the July 3 meeting of the Bowling Green City Commission. Katie, call roll please.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Denny?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson is absent.
Look at the approval minutes to have a motion.
Sumo.
Second.
Hill and Nash?
Any discussion? Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes, here.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Here. Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
All right. This is a special call meeting. We have a certain number of items on the agenda and due to, and Katie correct me if I'm wrong, but because it is a special meeting then we're limited to these items that are on the agenda to discuss tonight, or this afternoon. And this meeting is actually in lieu of the meeting that we would've had at 7:00 tonight. So, we would've had a meeting today anyway probably. Mr. De Febo, do you have anything?
I do not, Mayor. Pro Tem.
All right. We'll take up the first item, ordinance number BG 2012-22.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number four to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2012.
Sumo.
Hill and Nash?
Any discussion? Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order number 2012-124.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Joe L. Davis to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Sumo.
Second.
Hill and Nash?
Discussion? Call roll.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order number 2012-125.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Andrew S. Willian to the position of irrigation spray technician in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Sumo.
Second.
Nash and Hill?
Discussion?
Just by way, ask Ernie to come forward and put this person's name forward for promotion.
Good afternoon. Andrew's been with Parks Department for a bit over two years and Parks Maintenance. He, just go back when we first hired him, we came before you all and mentioned what a self-starter and what a self-motivated person is, and that's continued to be true with him. He has BS in turf management from Western and done everything we've asked from pesticide applicator's license, trained, competent, proficient on all the equipment, still works, couple jobs, still does some farming too, and he's just a very motivated individual.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-126.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2012-47 for Sony HXC D70H studio camera package from Pearl Mutter Purchasing Power of San Diego, California, in the amount of $25,033.10.
Sumo.
Second.
Hill and Nash?
Mr. De Febo?
One of the things that we do is we tape the meetings of the city commissions deliberations as well as other organizations. We have a need for an additional camera, a modern camera, to tape these meetings. We went out to bid, had four bids, and the one before you is the lowest and we recommend your approval.
Any questions, comments? Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order number 2012-127.
Municipal order authorizing payment to the Warren County Property Valuation Administrator for fiscal year 2013.
Sumo. Second.
Discussion? Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-128.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security grant funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of mobile radios for the police department in the amount of $312,426.
Sumo.
Denny?
Yes.
And Nash?
Mr. De Febo?
As the commission knows, we are moving to a more digital platform for our radio system. Part of that involves the replacement of our existing stock of mobile radios for those in public safety. Over the last two years, we've undertaken an effort to replace those. This again is an opportunity for us to advance that replacement by seeking other persons' money, particularly Homeland Security, to purchase these needed radios. It's 100% provided by the federal government. We feel we have a chance to get this grant and fulfill our goal of replacing all of our radios. Doug is here if you have any questions.
Timetable on this?
Doug, you know the timetable?
The application processes, which was what we're asking to move forward with, will go into an evaluation process, takes several months to evaluate, and we should know something toward the end of the fall or toward the end of the year as to whether or not we were successful.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order number 2012-129.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the police department in an amount up to $3,780.
Sumo.
Second.
Hill and Nash?
All of our patrol officers are issued, as well as most of our police officers, a bullet-resistant vest to wear during their service. Those vests are on a five-year replacement schedule. We're here again to try to use grant funds to help advance that goal. There's a 50% match to do that. Our part would be 3780 to purchase, I think, nine new vests. Again, Mr. Hawkins is here if you have a question.
Any questions, comments? Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order number 2012-130.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security grant funds through Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance for Firefighters Grant Program for the purchase of nine thermal imaging devices for the fire department in the amount not to exceed $57,600.
Sumo. Second.
Nash and Denny?
Mr. De Febo?
One of the pieces of equipment that our firemen use is thermal imaging. It's during a fire, especially an interior fire, it's almost impossible to see with human eyes, so you use these particular pieces of equipment to give you sight so you can better fight the fire. We buy these on our own, and we also use grant opportunities to replace these pieces of equipment. We want to have one for each truck. This will allow us to compete for the, for nine units, and hopefully we can get these nine units. Our match is 20%. Chief Johnson is here if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments? Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order number 2012-131.
Municipal order approving the contract to purchase between the City of Bowling Green and Small House Road Partners LLC, and approving the Small House Road realignment project reimbursement agreement between the city and Warren County, both relating to the realignment of Small House Road and improvements to Cave Mill Road.
Sumo.
Second.
Nash and Hill?
Slim has a copy that Katie provided. There's one copy that shows most of what we've already seen, but it's all in one document. Comments?
I think the best way to handle this would be to bifurcate the discussion with Gene outlining the elements of the agreement, then Melissa, Councilor, coming forward and detailing for you the construction aspect. Maybe Gene can go first.
Okay. As you see before you, there's two separate agreements. The first agreement is between the city and Small House Partners. That sets out the requirements of the responsibilities of both parties. I guess, I'll get to it in a few minutes, but my understanding, this road project is probably the number-one road project, I know for the city and maybe for the county as well. It's always nice when you have an intersection, you actually have four-way stops instead of two Ts that are separated by a few hundred feet. I don't live out that way, but I have been out that way a few times and been caught in the traffic, and it's a mess a lot of times today, particularly during rush hours when people try to get through that intersection. The purpose of this project is to realign Small House Road to actually make a four-way stop with Cave Mill, with new lighting at that intersection. Small House Partners is going, undergoing a new development at the land where this road has been proposed to go. This project's been on the map for four years, five years, six years. It's been, it's been in city and county's plans for a long time. The developer is looking to build a single-family residential units in this area, and through negotiations and discussions with the city and county, the developers agreed at the same time that they developed that neighborhood that they will build this realigned road. They'll acquire all the necessary land, they'll give land that they own, or donate, or not donate, but I guess as part of the deal, they'll provide land, with the land they're buying. They have also talked to the church that we need land from, that there's going to be some swapping of land, or how that's going to work. They've worked that out. I think they've also brought in the engineer who's designed this road project. So, we have, and I think Melissa and Jeff will talk about that in a few minutes, they can talk to you in a little more detail about what the plans actually look like. But the developer will build the road to city and county specs. We're going to appoint Mike Yow to be the contact person for the city and county, to be out there along with some public works people on a daily basis to oversee it, to make sure it meets our requirements and specifications. It's supposed to be done by the end of this year. And again, it's going to be, and let them tell you what's going to be two lane with whatever it's going to be, and they can tell you all the details about the road. But everybody's negotiated out what the road will look like, where it will go, again, meet our specifications. Small House Partners is going to do, like I said, everything. They're going to do the plans, they're going to acquire the land, they're going to relocate utilities, drainage improvements, basically everything involved with the road project the developer's going to do. At the end, once they get it done, they will sell that road, they're going to plat this out, and I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work out yet, but it may be a single plat where the road is, at least a single lot within that plat. And they will sell the road to the city for 2.15 million. Again, that will be a finished turnkey project, or project. We'll get the completed road, the signage on Cave Mill. Everything will be done for the city. Once that's done, they will then, again, at the end, once it's finished, the city will purchase it for $2.15 million, including everything, land and everything else involved. Within 30 days after that closing, Warren County has agreed that they're going to reimburse the city 50% of that cost, because this road, if everybody knows the layout of this one, this road is part of its in the city, part of its in the county, but it's a joint problem for the city and county both. It's a joint problem for the people who live there, and it's a joint problem for everybody else. So, this will be a joint project with the city and county as well. I guess that's the basic terms again. The first agreement is between the city and Small House Partners, saying that their responsibility to build a road, our responsibility to pay for it. The second agreement is the reimbursement agreement between the city and Warren County. It says, once we close, we take the road, that they will reimburse it. Again, Mike Yow, who's the county's public works director, will be on the job daily overseeing this project. I'm sure he's looking forward to it. Especially, well, maybe they'll wait a few weeks, maybe at least won't be so hot when he gets started, but he'll be out there overseeing the project, the city and county both. And I'll be glad to answer any other questions you've got about the agreements, but we've got Jeff and Melissa and Mac all here that I'm sure can answer questions to you on the technical aspects of the road.
Any questions for Gene at this time? Jeff or?
Yes, sir.
State your name and all that good stuff.
Jeff Lashley, Public Works Director. This road, many of us aware who drive this on occasions, the configuration of the intersection is not conducive to handling the volume of traffic that exists there today. What the new project would do, and I, the way I refer to this, is Small House North, Small House South. The northern leg of this would go around the church and align with the southern portion of Small House. Configuration would provide turning lanes, which is sorely needed in that location. A lot of, when you have a two-lane road like this, if somebody's turning left and you're behind them, you're sitting there until they move. So, this project would put that in, would put a signal in that could be able to handle that volume of traffic and those turning movements and address some drainage issues in the area.
How does it affect the people who live in Beddington Park?
There, the intersection of Sasquatch would dead-end, so it would not connect. If it were to, we'd have a five-point intersection, which is not a safe situation. So, it would disconnect that portion of Beddington Parkway. The other entrance would still exist. In my opinion, it would help the situation because traffic's able to move through the area better with the, with the new signal and all the turning lanes.
One thing we didn't mention, I guess a small issue, once this new road is done and open, we will close, we will close a portion of the old Small House that's no longer needed on the north leg, Jeff, if I know my directions.
Yes, north leg.
So, we'll close part of that, because we don't, we will not have another T of that four-intersection there at the end.
Go ahead, please.
There will be no additional entrances or exits for Beddington Park over what they currently have, correct?
No additional, correct.
Very well. And how, you may, or this may be for Mac, during the construction, this will be open, obviously before the others ones close, how is that going to work so people, I know probably not work very well, but with the amount of traffic, but is there any special issues that the public needs to be aware of during construction?
Well, anytime we're constructing, there will be some impact to traffic. It's, we're going to try our best to keep traffic as moving as good as possible. There will be some delay, detours through the project as needed when we're competing for real estate and when we're trying to pass cars. It's just going to be much easier to detour for a portion of this project.
Is there any way, Kevin, this may be for you, is there any way to have on our website a, some type of blog showing, detailing kind of where we're at on the project?
We did that with Morgantown Road.
Yeah, that's, and that worked out pretty well.
We can do the same for here.
Let people know.
Yes, that's.
Might even be able to put a live camera, I'm about to check that out, but I know we can do the blogging and put updates on that. We did it on Morgantown.
Maybe these people go over on I-65 and get off at Scottsville. I'm just kidding. Nothing like Scottsville. What else? Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Bill, I have one. The Massey Springs, I don't know what to call it.
Facility.
There you go. The Massey Springs facility now. Explain to me where we're going to cut Small House Road off in relationship to their ingress and egress now.
If you think about where their entrance is now on Small House Road, and just project it forward toward the church, and then it'll have a slight curve, and it will tie in at a right angle with the new road. So, it basically just extends out and turns and ties into the new road. The church, there, part of this road takes a portion of the church's parking, but it's replaced back on that side. So, there'll also be some parking adjacent to the road or the access into Massey Springs.
Okay, so the exit, if I understand, there's the exit close to Cave Mill on the Massey Springs property. Is it two interests, exits there?
I believe they have one down on, owned down on Cave Mill. So, this is the one that would be on Small House. So, we would not impact any others. Really, we're not impacting where they are with, we're tying them into the new road. So, it's not going to impact them in any way. They're going to still have the, more or less the same access in and out as they did before, it's just a little access road to get there.
Okay. Slim?
I still call them Neighborhood Action. Help me, Mr. De Febo, we renamed them.
Neighborhood and Community Services?
Neighborhood and Community Services Department. Can we utilize them to notify the people on Greider Pond and Hunting Creek Drive when the project starts and when, when any detours will begin?
Sure.
The one thing I like about the way that the proposed detour occurs is that once the project is built, there is no advantage in continuing to use the detour. One of the problems we ran into when we did some work, or someone did some work on Cave Mill in the past, and we detoured traffic through Crossings Boulevard and Crossing Subdivision is even once the work was done, there was still some advantage to taking that cut-through to avoid the light. So, I like that, that this particular detour, while it's going to impact those people who live there, I don't think it'll continue to have an impact on them going forward, but I do think it important that we notify them when they're going to start seeing an increased amount of traffic coming through their neighborhood.
We can have like weekly, by, every other week, meetings with Mac and Jeff and Melissa and Karen to get the word out.
Okay.
When, when the preliminary plans were done for this project, Gene said it was four or five years ago, something along that?
We did a planning study, I believe we presented it in '09.
Were the neighbors involved or had the opportunity? Someone called me just a little bit before the meeting, had seen the piece in the paper, and wanted some input in the project, and we talked through that, but were the neighbors allowed at the beginning?
In that planning study, we were just solely looking at the characteristics of what existed there, the traffic, the pavement conditions, drainage conditions and all that, and we just looked at alternates. The, the planning study, although it recommended an alternate, it was just to present to the commission the options that existed to solve the problem. We took that to the planning, to the commission and heard that, the exact date escapes me, but there was some discussion about it at that. We did not formally meet with the neighborhoods because we were just identifying options and seeing what worked best.
Is that something that in the future, Mr. De Febo, that we could think about having some type of community meeting on a project that affects so many people, or at least give them the opportunity to?
Yeah, but you have to understand, this was, there was, the mayor was heavily involved in this with the developer, with the county, so it's went on a fast track because of the traditional nature.
Or even when the preliminary plans were done in '09?
That probably had been the right time to do it.
I was going to say, probably been the right time to do that. Okay. And what else did this, the person said that they have, the last time something was done to the road, that it was, let's see, what word did they use? The gully needs to be fixed, I'm sure the drainage on both sides of the road, because it said the water pools, and in winter it gets icy, so I'm sure all those things will be taken care of.
Yeah, there are some pavement conditions that exist there now. There's, I know the right-turn lane when you're going on Cave Mill to turn up Small House, there's some bad sunk spots there, and as you're approaching Cave Mill Road from, on Small House North approach, it's corrugated, the pavement's very rough, and so, so there's, there's a lot of stuff that will be taken care of with this project.
And what we're doing tonight has nothing to do with the project of the homes.
This is for the road.
I want to make sure that, and again, the young lady who called me was concerned about the, the property itself, and I said that we're just dealing with the road. So...
There is no connection to Beddington area?
There is no connection to Beddington with this road.
But there is also no city connection. I think what the mayor's trying to say is that there is no connection between the city and the eventual development of the single-family residences there. Our only involvement with the county is for the purchase of the road as a turnkey project once it's completed.
And currently, unless I'm mistaken, I think almost all the land with proposed single-family subdivisions going in as in the county right now.
Right.
That's what, that was my understanding.
The church is in the city, but I think this land is actually in the county.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments? Mike, thank you, and again, commend the staff of both city and county government working together on this, and it may be a little trying to get through this process, but I think it'd be one of those other projects that when you, when we open the road, it'll be well worth it. I say that because I live on Highland, I don't have to go out there.
Well, if I may, this is a project that came to my attention more than seven and a half years ago when I first got elected to the commission, and I can't tell you how many people that I spoke with who said that problem will never be solved. All the people who have to get together to solve the problem, you'll never get all of them together. And through the work of a lot of different people, including Mayor Wilkerson, including Judge Buchanan, including Mac, including the Public Works Department for the city, and Gene, have gotten everybody to kind of sit down at the same table and get focused on one decision, and that decision is improving the flow of traffic through that particular area. It is a beautiful partnership between both public and private, which we would like to see more of, and when it works well, it works well. We've done it in other projects with the city. But this is a nuisance problem for the city for some time that is finally coming together because everybody is focused on one goal, and that's what's in the best interest of the citizens and those people who have to travel that roadway. So, thanks to all the players involved, whether they're in this room or not.
And the idea that $500,000 was set aside last year, 500 has been set aside this year?
We have the cash.
That's the money and no new debt for this road, which is a very good thing. Any other comments or questions? Joe, Melinda, we don't mean to monopolize the conversation if y'all have something. All right, we'll go from there then. All right. Call roll please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Municipal order number 2012-132.
Municipal order approving greenways maintenance agreement?
Sumo.
Second.
Nash and Hill?
Discussion, Mr. De Febo?
One of the gems of our community is the greenways. We've been in the process of extending and building the greenways, but today we're here to take care of a foundational need, which is the maintenance of the greenways already built. Some of those are outside the city, a majority are in the city. This agreement asks us to step forward and assume our responsibility to maintain the greenways that are within the city. From our perspective, it, it is just another linear park in, in the community, and we should step forward and assume that responsibility. The agreement there before you outlines the parameters of the agreement, and I think it's something that's been needed for a while, and we recommend we do it.
Questions or comments?
Only, I don't know that we've ever been, if she's ever appeared before the commission formally, but Rachel Helsler is here, who is the new greenways coordinator for the city and the county.
Please stand, let us welcome you. Glad to have you here. I know she's already been on a walk at Morgantown Road when it was a real cool evening. It's glad, good to have you.
She has, and I have to say, she's really done a fantastic job of re-energizing the greenways commission and spreading the word about what it is that the greenways does and can do for people.
Very good. As, as an aside, I'm in Mackinac Island, Michigan, last week, had on my WKU shirt, and a gentleman comes up, and he asked me, he's been through here, and he's going to relocate when he retires, and one of the things that he liked was our greenway system. Thought that was very progressive, and he, he talked for a long time. I hope he obviously does, but again, getting people to move here has an impact too. Thank you very much. All right.
That's it?
We have one more.
You have a vote on this?
Yes, roll call please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
And the last item, and I'll turn this over how Commissioner Nash wants to handle this. We have a general discussion on proposed citywide ban regarding use of fireworks with possible action to follow, and Katie, if you can help us through this, I don't know if you want to have the discussion, if you want to do, just whatever your pleasure is.
Do we need to do any motions first, or we can just start talking?
No, we can start talking.
Okay. I recognize the lateness of what I'm proposing this evening. There have even been those who've somewhat suggested maybe I'm out to ruin people's Fourth of July plans, and that is not my intent at all with this in doing it so late. It would have been my preference that the city would have followed the county's burn ban, which included fireworks from the outset. That was not the decision that the city made. By way of clarification, I want to state that the city already has a burn ban. There can be no open burning inside the city limits at any time during the year because of the density of our population. The county does not have a burn ban, so their burn ban came into effect, and they also included residential discharge of fireworks. And the city, by way of the mayor, Mayor Wilkerson, Chief Johnson of the Fire Department, and city manager Kevin DeFebo, made a decision on Friday that, given the fact that we have a full-time fire department that can adequately extinguish any fire that comes up in the city of Bowling Green, that we would not institute for the city our own fireworks ban, slightly different from the county's, but in effect, ending the fireworks. I have the utmost confidence in the fire department's ability to extinguish a fire. What I'm proposing today is in the effort to prevent fires. Not that the fire department is not interested in preventing fires, because they do that on a regular basis through various programs. But in this particular effort, I would have liked to have seen the county follow suit, or the city follow suit with the county on Friday. That didn't happen. I started trying to make contact with various members of the commission and various members of city staff, starting on Friday night, and eventually starting to make some full contact and have conversations with individuals on Monday. On Monday, it was my understanding that the mayor, within his full authority, was going to institute a fireworks ban, and that it was not going to take commission action. And Mayor Wilkerson has the ability to do that. The mayor chose not to do that, said that he was gonna continue to follow the advice or the memo of Chief Johnson and stick with the decision that they had made on Friday. However, he also pointed out that we have a board of commissioners, and his decisions are always subject to review by this board. I explain all this because there are a lot of pieces that come into play to this. This isn't just simply banning fireworks. To be honest with you, most of the fireworks that people see being discharged inside the city limits of Bowling Green are already being done so illegally. I mean, we have the 200-foot rule already in place that says that fireworks cannot be discharged within 200 feet of a structure, a vehicle, or a person. So that pretty much eliminates but a handful of places where fireworks can be discharged.
Go ahead.
My daughter rolled in, and it threw me for a curve there, I apologize. So we really already have a law that is on the books that should be addressing the conditions that we're having to deal with. But for whatever the reason is, the law we have is not currently dealing with the condition. Whether it's people are just ignoring the law, whether it's the fact that the commission debated this issue for a long time and kind of gave a wink and a shrug on how we're going to do enforcement, because we knew that, you know, there were only a limited number of places fireworks could be discharged anyway. I don't know why people continue to discharge fireworks in violation of the current ordinance. And to be honest with you, with the limited amount of time we have, nobody has the time to really figure that out. This is not a sociological experiment into human behavior. What I'm trying to do is address what I believe is a danger for the densely populated area that we call home, which is Bowling Green. We have entirely too many dry conditions and entirely too many houses that sit entirely too close to one another to run the risk of fireworks starting some kind of grass fire that then cannot be quickly extinguished. The fire on Morgantown Road was not fireworks-related. There is no indication whatsoever that the fire on Morgantown Road was fireworks-related. I only reference that fire to recognize how quickly and how fastly fire moves in such dry conditions. Regardless of what started the Morgantown Road fire, in a matter of no time at all, it took multiple fire units, multiple hours, and it put multiple people at risk in extinguishing that fire. It would be a travesty, in my opinion, if we allowed fireworks to be discharged and run the risk of a fire moving that quickly through the city limits of Bowling Green. Extinguishing fires is one thing, we can do that. Unnecessarily losing property or losing life and going through the inconvenience of that when it could be avoided is something that I think that the city commission should weigh in on. I have a municipal order in front of me, 2012-133, that would ban the discharge of fireworks in the city limits of Bowling Green, starting upon its passage and up until the 5th of July, which would be the window for fireworks in the city limits of Bowling Green. I'm prepared to introduce that here and take a vote on it. But before I go any further, I'll turn the floor over to any member of the commission or any member of the public who wants to speak on this item.
Joe or Melinda, do you have anything right now?
I don't have anything.
Is there anyone like to address the commission on this issue? Anyone at all? Yes, Mr. Bailey, you want to come up to? I know, the people on TV want to see Mr. Howard Bailey?
Dean Bailey.
Is Mr. Howard Bailey?
Howard Bailey. 1567 Chandler Circle. My only question is, from a police standpoint, is this enforceable in our community? Are we gonna have the police department chasing ghosts around when crime might be of a greater issue? And I say that in all the understanding, I'm not in disagreement with you, I just wonder, is it, is it something that we can actually do? I just hate to see policies and laws on the book that are unenforceable.
The policy we have on the books now is unenforceable. I mean, the reality is, the 200-foot rule, a police officer has to be able to see the fireworks being discharged in order to call into question the 200-foot rule. I believe unfortunately now we're chasing ghosts. I think Dean Bailey's point is a valid point. What I, what I hope this will do, and Chief Hawkins is here, and trust me, if he disagrees with me, he'll say so. But what I hope this will do is eliminate the ability, I hope that it will strengthen the police department's ability to respond to fireworks in these dry conditions. Because if fireworks are being discharged anywhere, under this particular ordinance, or municipal order, I'm sorry, under this particular municipal order, it would be illegal to do so. There is no question about, are you 200 feet from a structure, a vehicle, or a person? If you're inside the city limits and you're discharging fireworks, then it's illegal. I believe that it gives the police department in these dry conditions a much greater ability to restrict the dangerous behavior. Chief Hawkins, if you wanted to address it, and feel free to disagree if I'm wrong.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. I would defer to Gene Harmon if I'm wrong about what I'm about to say, but what I will tell you is, I believe the maximum law under, under any city ordinance is a misdemeanor. And that being said, any violation would require us to witness the violation occur, meaning that we would have to see the firework discharge in order for us to take enforcement action. That doesn't mean we can't see the evidence of discharge and encourage those who we believe have been discharging them to cease the discharge, but in terms of actual enforcement action, it would require a police officer to see the violation of that municipal order take place before we could then engage in enforcement. So, to respond to Mr. Bailey, it is difficult. It does require a police officer to be at the right place at the right time in order to see the violation occur before we can take enforcement action, but that doesn't stop us from taking corrective or suggestive action if those opportunities also allow.
One item, if I might?
Yes.
Not in an attempt to debate you, because I agree with everything you said. The one difference I see, and if I'm wrong, please say so, is that under the current ordinance, it's only complaint-driven. Meaning if a police officer is driving down a particular road and sees fireworks discharged, that police officer is not going to stop at that property where he saw those fireworks discharged, unless that police officer has received a complaint from dispatch that somebody has called in, somebody flags down that police officer and says, hey, they're shooting off fireworks. Under this particular ban, the police, it's not complaint-driven, since no fireworks would be allowed to be discharged if an officer sees fireworks being discharged. That officer can go directly to the location he believes that's being done, which, in my opinion, only in my opinion, would increase the likelihood that the fireworks would still be being discharged at the time the officer arrives.
I hope somebody has the current law in front of them. I don't know that the current ordinance says that we will only respond as a matter of complaint. I think as a practical matter, we don't actively seek out opportunities to enforce the law. If we hear fireworks in the distance, we don't necessarily drive around looking for the source of that in order to take enforcement action. We rely on, frankly, because there's so many opportunities, because there are a lot of people discharging fireworks, that if we were chasing the sound of, or that, we'd frankly be chasing our tail or chasing that all afternoon and all evening long. So we choose to respond based on complaint. That doesn't mean if an officer happens to drive by and happens to see the illegal discharge that they wouldn't then take some action. I don't think it precludes us from doing that. As a practical matter, we just simply don't pursue that on a proactive nature. But again, I would agree with you that if there is a complete ban of fireworks, we would be more proactive, because A, we would hope there would be fewer incidences of discharge, and then we would be more likely to identify the source and the violator. Does that help?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm not about people being fined, I'm not about people being excited. What I hope this ordinance will do is, in these dry conditions, prevent people from discharging fireworks. And I'm a little optimistic and a bit naive, I guess, when it comes to that. I'm sure there will continue to be people who won't, who won't follow the ordinance. But I do believe that many people are law-abiding citizens, and they will, they will not discharge fireworks if this ban is in place. And I do believe that it gives a measure of security to neighbors of those who are discharging fireworks to take some type of corrective action, and a corrective action that no longer involves a measuring tape, no longer involves discretion to a certain extent, because you're either discharging fireworks or you're not. It makes it very black and white, as opposed to gray. One final thing, I had a conversation with meteorologist Chris Allen today about what did yesterday's rainfall do to our drought conditions. I was hoping it would have just continued to rain and rain and rain, because we need that. Even with yesterday's rainfall, we are still six and a quarter inches below what we should be for rainfall at this, at this time of year. So to think that yesterday's rainfall, as significant as it was, has somehow mitigated my concern about the drought conditions and what fireworks may do with those drought conditions, it doesn't hold water, so to speak, for me. Again.
You want to hear from Chief Johnson first, or? Chief Johnson, we'd like to give you ample time. Your thoughts on the matter?
You got a question for me, or you want me to?
They just let you ad lib, I'm not sure. You and Mayor Wilkerson had, obviously were part of the meeting Friday. Has anything changed in your mind since then, as far as your idea that, that not having the, not banning the fireworks was still something that the fire department could handle?
Well, I got a lot of faith in our guys, so I think we can handle stuff. Again, I think Commissioner Nash makes a valid point, that's not really the issue, because we're all about prevention. However, you know, the conditions are better now than they were yesterday, or the day before, the day before that, but even so, with as they were, we still felt like we would have wanted to have some extra help out there. We were very aware of the dry conditions. There's a whole lot of things that start fires under dry conditions, including the possibility of fireworks, although it's not all that common for us. But, you know, I've got a lot of confidence, even if we had a ban, I'd, you know, we're still gonna have some issues, and we're gonna continue to cover them as we need to, so. I've got a lot of confidence in this. So I don't know if I answered your question.
Well, I'm not sure that I gave you a good question to answer, actually. Was the ban, the ban was in place that the county had when Morgantown Road caught fire, right? Is that right?
That's correct.
So they had a ban that didn't obviously negate that from happening?
And let's correct that, that ban happened one week ago today, not Friday. It was one week ago.
Oh, I apologize.
It was one week ago today.
I'm running my weekends in together, I apologize.
I wasn't here Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, so.
So it's been a week in place.
It was on Tuesday that.
Yeah, I think our original meeting was last, there was some discussion last Tuesday when the, when the county announced the ban.
Okay. Does anybody have any further questions for Chief Johnson?
I don't know.
I'd just like to tell him thank you, you and your staff, and Chief Hawkins, y'all have done a great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
And this is not about a lack of confidence in either department?
No, I never took it that way.
Very well.
Melinda?
To kind of follow along with Commissioner Nash on some things he said, one of the things he said was to prevent fires. Well, I would agree, we all want to prevent fires, but in this municipal order, I see nothing about burning cigarettes flying from someone's car. Could that not be a hazard and something we could prevent fires with as well? Also saying that if this municipal order was passed, then no more fireworks, and it would be obvious if someone was breaking the law. And currently, the way the city limits are, people are breaking the law because of the 200-feet limit. And it was said that police have to be at the right place at the right time to enforce the current fireworks ordinance. My question there is, we're not following the law when we break the speed limit. So does policemen have to be in the right place and right time to catch me speeding? Yes. If I run a stop sign? Yes. So to me, this municipal order, it's not so much preventing fire or prevent people breaking the law, it's just banning fireworks. We're two days away from when fireworks are gonna be illegal, 10 o'clock, July 5th, 10 p.m. People, citizens have purchased their fireworks. We have vendors that have made a commitment to our city to sell fireworks, and now we want to say, no, we're not gonna allow it anymore. About two and a half days left to go. I did mention that this burn ban by the county was a week ago, and I'm glad it was mentioned that the Morgantown Road fire was not caused by a firework. And that's it.
Anything else?
Would you have been on board with the proposed municipal order at any time before today?
Possibly without rain, possibly, yes. The rain did have a lot to do with it. It's too close to the fireworks being over with.
And should anybody, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I do, I do want to aggressively defend this municipal order, under your premise that if, if we can, we should only implement laws that can be enforced, no law can be enforced unless somebody's sitting there. So if I take the opposite of your argument, then we should do away with speed limits. We should do away with stop signs, because somebody has to be there in order to see that. And for me, I understand the point you're trying to make, but it just doesn't seem to make sense to me that we know we have drought conditions despite yesterday's weather. We know from the Morgantown Road incident how quickly fire can spread, that we would say, well, because we can enforce other laws, that we're not going to give it our best shot at enforcing this law. And if you want to propose banning people throwing cigarettes out of windows, I'll be right behind you.
Any other comments from? I have a couple. One, I do, I do share Slim's, and I think we all do, obviously, his concern here, and appreciate him looking into this further. I agree with Slim in that I think we learn from doing these things. I know I have in the few months that I've been sitting here. But following the county, Judge Buchanan's lead, I would have much preferred for the ban to be for the whole county and not leave out the city of Bowling Green when that happened, whenever that. county and not leave out the city of Bowling Green whenever that happened. I, too, was of, one, just a couple of days ago, looking at a ban, and thought we were heading in that direction as well, and that didn't happen, obviously. The rain did have a little bit to play on me and my decision here as well. We've been in a drought for a while, we'll probably be in a drought for a pretty good The ban does start at 10 o'clock Thursday. I think that to do something now is too late. And this may be one of the most troublesome issues from my position, I'm sure the other members would have a similar story. I don't know that there's a right or wrong reason. I don't know. I know if you're shooting off fireworks and you like them, that's what you think is right. If you don't like fireworks, then nothing's going to satisfy you at all. There are a lot of law-abiding citizens that are violating this ordinance currently, and I had envisioned that if, with this ordinance that we have in place right now, that if someone was violating that ordinance and it disturbed you, that you would call the police, and the police would respond, and again, even if they couldn't see it, they would take some type of action to inform the people that they were violating the law. And if they had to come back again, then enforcement action would be taken. But again, I don't know what, right or wrong, this is a problematic ordinance to begin with, and I think the state did us a disservice by passing this to begin with, and I might regret saying that, but I do believe that. I think they put us all in a big hole, so.
I want to say one more thing, I don't want people to think I'm anti-law, but a week ago tonight, I also had the opportunity to do an interview. I was going out of town early Wednesday morning, and I stressed in that interview safety and the points of our law, that they should not, are not supposed to be discharged by someone under 18. I stressed to be considerate of your neighbors and to use safety precautions because the conditions were so dry. I guess it was chosen for that interview not to be published, and that's fine, but a week ago tonight, I was stressing safety and to use common sense when lighting fireworks. So, I do want that on the record. Everyone knows I enjoy fireworks, I like fireworks, but I also know I would have not lit fireworks if it had not rained last night, because I thought, my personal opinion, it was too dry at that time. So, I personally was thinking that, and I was hoping, and still hope, all citizens would take into consideration their neighbors and safety.
Any other comments, Slim? Joe?
No. I would still.
Yes, I was going to ask.
I would still like to add municipal order 2012-133, put it up for a vote.
We need a motion and second to add.
Some move?
Nash and Dunning? Municipal order banning use of fireworks in the city of Bowling Green? I'm sorry, we need a vote on the motion to add.
I thought, yeah, I thought I was missing something.
Do a vote on that.
Joe, you have something?
This is motion to add?
Motion to add.
Okay, I'll second it.
Yes. So, we had Nash and Dunning, motion and second.
Any discussion?
Further?
Call roll, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Hill, what was your vote? Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, now?
Now, I'd make a motion to take a vote on municipal order 2012-133.
And that's the municipal order banning use of fireworks in the city of Bowling Green. Nash, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dunning.
Further discussion, comment? Call roll, please.
Hill?
No.
Nash?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Waltrip?
No.
And with that, Katie, if you could explain the tie vote, please?
We have a two-two vote, and therefore, the motion does not pass.
Okay. All right. Mr. DeFebo, anything else?
No, there.
Anything else from the commission? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for being here.